Join us.
I'll be back again.
Would Stan join us? All right, listen. Leave us to the prayer and call everybody as they want.
Let's pray. God, we admire and adore you. We bless you for what you have created and for all you have given us. Your gifts to us can be seen in the relationships that train us, the laws that defend us, the homes that shelter us, the food that sustains us, the comforts that bring us rest, the leaders that build this community. All wise God be with us and guide us to be good stewards of these gifts, and may we use them to bring blessings to those around us, and you will be pleased with us as we reflect your love to this community. Amen.
Amen. Bill Remains standing for our leaders of the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its scroll.
I'll get my computer back. All right, call to order, Guthrie Public Works Authority Meeting, November 16th. Public comments, it looks like we've got a couple. Anthony Gibbs. Now, I've already stated your name, but you know the rules.
Hey, hello, my name is Anthony Gibbs. I live just outside of city limits on the south side. I'd be very, very brief. I want to say two things. The first is that I don't get a chance to talk to you all very much. Tonight, I'm actually as just a citizen, not an employee, but in that capacity, I would like to thank you for your leadership. I don't know that you get that a lot, and it's not easy. I would imagine to be a council member, you can't make everyone happy, yet I think that the heart that we see is to do the right thing, and I, as a person that values that, I just want to say I appreciate it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Anthony.
Second is just for Neighborhood Solutions. I just wanted, I'd like to encourage our just our continued partnership with them. I think that I, one of the things that I hear very beneficial about you as a council is financial integrity and responsibility. That's something that's big, and because of that, I personally like Neighborhood Solutions and how that they do their things because their return per dollar is amazing. I was trying to quantify that, and we're, and as somebody that runs a nonprofit, I wish that our return per dollar was what they had. Twenty to 150 times is what I was sitting there trying to quantify, and their impact in our community is just amazing. So, I would just like to say to the council, having kind of been close to Neighborhood Solutions, being able to work with them, and to see the good that they do, I would like to see our partnership continue, and that's, that's, so, thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. And then we got, it looks like Do Goleen, or it could be Sue DeShaw, who you're going to talk to us to?
I'd like to wait until you.
Counsel.
Okay, okay. All righty, if that's it, anybody else, anything else? Anybody have any community announcements, anything? Then we will go on to the consent agenda, approve the minutes of the Public Works Authority Meeting held on November 2nd, 2021.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Place your votes.
All votes ranked.
We have unanimous decision four. Okay, so discussion and possible action to designate Juneteenth as an official city holiday. Leroy, would you like to take the lead on that?
Juneteenth was recognized as a federal holiday on June 17th, 2021, when the president signed the Juneteenth National Independence Day Act into law. Some Oklahoma municipalities have added Juneteenth as a designated holiday for city employees. We attached a spreadsheet to show you what holidays some select communities have, the ones that have already added Juneteenth. There'll probably be others that add it along the way. I would just say that to date, the tradition for the city has been that we recognize all the city, all the federal holidays, and so far, all the other federal holidays, we recognize as city holidays.
I see that the federal government has 11 paid holidays. The state does 11 paid holidays, and we currently do 13. If we added that, added Juneteenth, it'd be 14. So, I would like to make a motion that we keep 13 paid holidays, and we allow the current or the new HR director to poll the employees to determine which 13 they want to keep. So they could keep, they can add June 13th or not, but it'd be on the, on the list, so that we only keep 13 paid holidays.
I'm not good with adding another number, because we're already two above what the feds are. But I think that's a good deal to figure it out. I don't really care which one they want, and they're the ones getting it off, so I would second that motion.
I, I would point out, when we sent this out to city councilmen to give you a heads up, it'd be on the agenda, we also sent it to department heads. It wasn't necessarily all employees, but we sent it to all department heads, and the feedback was if, if one holiday was going to be taken away, it probably made most sense to eliminate Good Friday. And that was the feedback from the department heads.
So, basically, you're saying they've already done what James is asking?
Not, not employee-wide, but the department heads did respond.
Well, if you look at number three under the, on page five, you'll see it.
I'd like to make a comment towards that. Looking at this list, I realize there's a lot of cities that you compared it with that do not recognize Good Friday. The reason why we're considering Juneteenth is because it is a historical day, a very important historical day in our nation's history, and I believe it should be recognized. But I also believe that Good Friday, as a Christian, I don't, I believe that's the most significant holiday of them all. I would personally not support that, nor would I support the change of, it's not, I would choose President's Day if I had to choose one, but with the Columbus Day, for instance, that's now referred to as Indigenous Peoples' Day, right? Has been since 1977, practiced by our Native American citizens. So, I would not take that away from them, either. I believe every group has their day and then should have their day, so I just want to put my input on that. I would not support removing Good Friday.
So, are you thinking we should decide that, or we should go on?
Well, I don't know. Who should decide?
Well, they're the ones that are getting to.
That's true.
You know, it is their time.
I'll go with whatever the council wants to do on that decision as far as who decides, but I'm just putting my two cents.
What are the additional day, everybody gets 11, but we get 13. What's the extra two days?
Well, there's 11 federal holidays, but then we get the day after Thanksgiving, and we get Christmas Eve. That's where we get the 13.
But do you get the day after Christmas, too, or do?
No, we get Christmas Day and Christmas Eve.
Okay.
But Christmas Day is the federal holiday, so there's 11 federal holidays.
The Act is always a Thursday, so they give them the Friday, so they have a long weekend.
But the federal government doesn't observe Good Friday.
Neither does the state.
I, we've got a motion and a second. We've had a little bit of discussion. Does anybody else want to say anything more? Basically, the motion is, as stated, that we turn this back to the department heads and have them get an answer from their people, and see what they want to eliminate. That's what the motion is, and that's what's been seconded.
By the way, the county, Logan County, has 14 holidays.
Okay. We have a motion and a second.
The, the motion is to let the city decide.
Let the employees decide which one they want to eliminate in order to add in Juneteenth. Okay?
Yep.
Everybody understands the motion?
Yep.
Please, please, please your bets.
Well, we know where you want that.
And it looks like to be a unanimous decision. Okay, that being done, ladies and gentlemen, we're adjourned on GPWA and opening the city council meeting. Call to order consent agenda. Item A is approve the minutes of the city council meeting held on November 2nd of 2021.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Place your votes. Unanimous decision. We move on to item three, discussion and possible action to designate Juneteenth as an official city holiday. We're going to bypass that one. Number four, discussion and possible action on renewing the agreement between the city and Guthrie and Neighborhood Solutions for use of a portion of the Armory Facility. I think we probably would go ahead and start with Sue, and let her make her comments, and then we'll, well, I tell you what, Ashley, I think I'd rather let Leroy start that off.
Okay. The city, for a number of years, have had a lease arrangement with Neighborhood Solutions to store items for their projects and donate items at the Armory. Unbeknownst to probably anybody, technically, that lease should have been renewed several times. It's, so all we're doing tonight is same agreement, just updating it to this year, renewing it, and changing it where we don't have to monitor it every year, change the language, it automatically renews unless one part of the other gives 90 days notice they want to cancel it. And that way, we don't have to bring it on the agenda and renew it every year.
Makes a lot of sense.
So, that's what state staff recommends?
Yes.
I just make a motion to approve it. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Place your votes.
All votes ranked.
At Carrie's, 100%. So, let me get my computer back up again.
May I?
You may.
I want to tell you what you're paying for. Because you folks all know already, month's due, that we do housing and home repair for seniors. We've done that since 2007. But another program that we've had all this time, since 2014, with your help, by allowing us to use that portion of the Armory, it's a small portion, and half of it floods when it rains, but we, but we love it. We need it, and we use it. But since 2014, we have had various donation partners, and this is done through a large nonprofit where corporations list their companies, and it's like a catalog. You can go in, sign up if you qualify. Our first donation partner was Home Depot. We acquired three of their stores, and from those folks, we had to go pick that stuff up, so we had to buy a huge trailer. But all of that material was given to the people who live in Logan County. So, in the beginning, the west side, I think everyone over there had a brand-new front door, because it needed it, and we gave it to them. So, all of this was free. We did check guidelines, but it was only for homeowners. We could not give that to rental properties. But we did expect landlords to maintain their properties, and sometimes we said so, and sometimes that helped. But we never sold any of that. It was all given away. And some of you may have noticed on Facebook or email that recently we cleaned out what was left over from Home Depot. And we had quite a herd of people. You missed it. And we just gave all that away to the general public. It had nothing to do with income or anything else. This year, we have had our local Walmart as a donation partner. Everything that they have given us have gone to Logan Community Services for domestic violence victims, so we can rehouse them and set up housekeeping. The rest of it went to Hope House, and that was primarily men's clothing, shoes. Sometimes they needed vans in that building. So, that was basically split two ways, but that was a six-month deal, and it's over in December. So, our new donation partner is Amazon. Excuse me. It's Amazon, and we're buying, there's always a fee for this, but we are purchasing a 58-foot semi that will be coming soon, now that we have established, we have this, we still have our warehouse. And we don't know what's on it. It's going to be like Christmas, but in.
Oh, but they filled it? Amazon filled the semi?
Yes.
Wow.
It's their semi.
Yeah.
So, that'll be coming to us. They, they did ask us what we needed, and based on what we do, you know, as a nonprofit. So, one of the, one of the items I kicked off was household goods. That could be anything. So, I think that's what we're going to get, anything.
And all this material stored, you're saying, at the Armory?
Yes.
Do you have adequate space for all that, that you have coming?
Well, we're praying.
That's always good.
In order to qualify for this, we had to have a warehouse, you can call that a warehouse. It's kind of chopped up. We have to move things around a little bit to make things work, but we've been able to do that all these years. The other was that we had a forklift, and Penny kindly confirmed that he would come by with that. And then I learned also that Anthony Gibbs.
Is he still here?
Anthony has one, so we don't have to borrow the city's. And pallet jack, which we already have. So, that, along with tax returns and many years of, of good business, they were able to give us this truckload. We have the ability and time, or any time now, to buy other truckloads. Depending on the company, we never know what we'll get. Obviously, we're going to get this all at one time. Hope House guys and girls will come over and help us. We have two hours to unload that semi, and then we'll have our volunteers to help us get it set up. And once that happens, this will go to anyone in the community, homeowner or otherwise. There will be an income guideline on that. We want those that are low-income and can't buy for themselves to have this stuff. After that, then we can give it to other people. So, that's what we're doing, and I just wanted you to know that we really appreciate the use of that, that spot over there. So, we look forward to.
How bad is that leaking? I didn't realize it was flooding out.
Would you say three inches of water?
Is it leaking or coming under the door?
Actually, I think there's a square spot. I think that was access to a drain of some sort that has been, it looks like, cemented over, maybe. But a lot of it comes up from there. Some of it comes in under, there's a garage door bay. Some of it comes there. So, luckily, it's, it has two levels. So, the high level is where the, the good stuff goes, and at the lower level, we have been putting on pallets and whatever we could do. And grateful to Anthony Gibbs. He'll come in and pump the water out for us. He'll check in for us every time we have a rain.
Anthony, is there a solution for that, to fix it?
I don't know. It's something that I'm sure.
I think the only way it could really be fixed is if we raised, we'd have to lay cement another three inches up. I don't believe that it can be, but then, what do I know? Unless, unless we cement over that one section where I can see water coming up. But a lot of it comes, hey, I heard that. Anyway, thank you all so very much. I want you to know what we're doing.
Thanks for what you do. All righty, that takes care. We move on to item number five, discussion and possible action to accept the 2021 VAWA grant, 2023, 2223 VAW Guthrie CI-OOOO3. The grant is a sum of $101,577.98. Take it, Don.
All right, this is our VAWA grant. This will be the fifth time we've been awarded this grant. Up until this year, they paid 100% of one employee's salary and benefits. Like the last, the Boca grant I brought a month ago, I think, they, they've been hit by hard times of COVID, so they are expecting a reduction. I put 8.3 in there, but it could be 10-ish. It just depends on which employees in there and how much they're making. We're guaranteed that amount of money regardless, so we could put a million-dollar employee in there. We're still only getting $100,000. So, there's, there's just a little bit of leeway in there, but it's, the, the money funds, an investigator that does, his primary duties are sexual assault, stalking, domestic violence, anything to do with sex. And it's, it's been a godsend for the department, and for the city, too, because y'all haven't had to pay for it.
We're offsetting a portion this time, right?
We, yes, yes. I am, I am asking that you accept it, and that we're able to, you know, make up that eight to 10% difference roughly.
I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second is there any other discussion? Place your votes.
All votes ranked.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Don. Discussion, possible, no, item number six, discussion and possible action to approve resolution 21, or 2021-34, amending the airport property lease rate. Go along.
So, currently, the airport property lease rate is 17 cents a square foot annually, per foot. This rate's been in effect since 2010, and upon review by the Airport Advisory Board on November 9th, the recommendation is to increase the annual lease rate from 17 cents a square foot to 22 cents a square foot.
I thought you were going to say to 285 or something.
So, the rate increase will only affect new property, all the, or the new lease properties from this point forward, and it will not affect the existing property leases.
Unless they renew a lease or something.
Well, they got 40-year lease.
Oh, okay.
They've got leases in.
So, we do have a CPI that increases the existing lease, leases right now. Is that what you're doing?
No, I was getting mine out of the way.
And that is every five years. So, every five years, the existing lease rates, we get to increase by the CPI. Yeah.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Place your bets, or, place your bets, guys. I don't know why I'm saying that.
We know where you're going.
I know where you're going Friday night.
Number seven, discussion and possible action to approve resolution number 2133, amending the personal policy manual to include addendum Q, Breach of Personal Identifiable Information Agency policy. I don't know your name, so you have to introduce yourself.
Leroy, where are you?
This is Liz Botello, our new Human Resource and Administrative Services Director.
Welcome, Liz.
Thank you so much. I'm grateful to be here, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve this wonderful community. Okay, so this is my first rodeo, right? So, this policy was written in partnership with the State District Attorney's Council Office. The City of Guthrie currently does not have a policy in place in the event that a data breach of personally identifiable information occurs. Therefore, we would like to modify and add this new policy to our policy and procedure handbook. The District Attorney's Council Office has provided a recommended policy that has been adapted to meet the needs of the City of Guthrie by providing guidance and examples of how to protect personally identifiable information in the workplace. The implementation of this policy will allow us to continue to provide a safe environment for our employees, as well as help sustain the Victims of Crime Act grant, which provides funds for victim assistance and compensation programs, as well as support and service to those affected by violent crimes. Since our city employees handles personally identifiable information daily, this is a good policy to put in place.
Personally identifiable information. Can you define?
Social security numbers?
Yep, exactly. Yep, social security number, names, addresses.
I'm going to make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Cast your votes.
All votes ranked.
Unanimous decision, and thank you.
Thank you.
It was nice meeting you. Discussion and possible action to approve resolution 2135 regarding the City of Guthrie providing funds to the amount of 20% match up to $100,000 from the city's NEU ARPA funds as a matching amount for Pollard Theater's grant proposal to the State of Oklahoma's ARPA funding portal.
All right, I'll start out on this one. The State of Oklahoma is getting $1.9 billion from the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA short. The projects to be funded from these funds fall into four categories: economic development, workforce, health, human services, transportation, infrastructure, rural development, and then government transformation and collaboration. At our next meeting, and we've, we've sent you some information, at our next meeting, we will be bringing you an application where we will be applying for $500,000 of these state ARPA monies and match it with the $500,000 of ARPA funds the city received direct. We're getting $2 million direct, half of it this year, half of it next year. So, we do plan to apply to do some water improvements as part of this funding as well. And our local funding can also be used for economic development and utilities. When Lieutenant Governor was here a few weeks ago, he encouraged us to look at an economic tourism-related project to submit for these state funds, because in his mind, Guthrie is the tourism mucka of Oklahoma, and he wants to keep us in the forefront of tourism and economic development. So, we discussed with him the potential of pursuing funding in some kind of partnership with the Pollard to renovate the Pollard. It's not been updated in roughly 30 years, so a lot of their mechanical systems are starting to fail. Unfortunately, we've had lightning hit some of them. As we've talked to Senator Hall, which is one of the members of the legislative committee handling distributing these monies, he's indicated that if there's some local match or local involvement, it would make a much more competitive application than asking for 100% grant. And so, in our minds, the Pollard is an economic development, tourism generator. We will be entering into them with a sponsorship agreement. Of course, they will identify us as a sponsor. They'll promote their facilities to enhance our tourism efforts, and then some additional things we'll work with them on when scheduling allows it. Look at hosting film festivals in the future to continue to support our film industry. Use it as a site location for shooting films. One of the more recent films that was shot, the lead character in that movie inherited movie theater, and so they needed a place to shoot a scene that had the appearance of a movie theater. And then just promoting arts through community outreach efforts through our youth. We think it has to do with season opportunity. If we're going to attract young families, entrepreneurs, young professionals to Guthrie, continue to grow our community. You got to have these type of themes, arts, and good schools. And we think that this goes along with all of those, quality education parks, walkability, arts in all forms, special events. Those are themes that create the community as a place where people want to work, live, and carry out their life. So, we think this makes a good partnership. We will provide the funding 20%, up to $100,000. It will be their project. We won't be responsible for administration of it, but that kind of lays out our thoughts on the project. Justin has some comments, and we'd be glad to answer any questions that we can.
I think Leroy covered most of it, but just to give you a little bit of background, kind of on, on the last 18 months or so of the Pollard's life, have been a little complicated. The, the live theater industry across the nation basically shut down 100% at the beginning of the pandemic, and of all the industries that had to shut down for that, it was probably one of the hardest to open back up. So, the Pollard- So the Pollard had about an 18-month window where they had nothing going on. So within that period of time, there were roughly 100 shows canceled. The Pollard House, the capacity is about 260. 100 shows, even if you averaged out to a house of 200 people, you're looking at, you know, 20,000 people who didn't come to downtown Guthrie because of that 18 months of being shut down. If you're looking at an economic impact project where we can see a return on investment for our city ARPA dollars, in terms of a tourism economic development project, this is the safest bet. For every person who buys a ticket to a live theater production, the national average says that that person's going to spend another 50 bucks on eating out, going to shops, those kind of things. Somebody who comes to a Pollard show doesn't just come to a Pollard show, they spend more money downtown. So a 20% match up to 100K, that's an investment in economic development. It's an investment in our downtown. If you have any questions about the grant or the Pollard... Mr. Herschel's here. We can try to answer whatever, any questions you might have.
What is the timeline on this deal? You know, some of these we apply for, two years down the road, we see them. What kind of a situation is it on this?
I don't know if the state has...
This is relatively new. I know that the legislative committee that's over this, they've talked about different ways to handle... They may back up and assign these funds to different state agencies to distribute, and so we'll apply through the portal, but then it may be divided, well, that application goes to this state agency and that. So we really don't have a timeframe, and then when we get funded, some of our funding, we have to go through an A95 review process, and we can't... Just like our grant for the softball fields. We can't spend any money on that project until we get a release of funds. Our CDBG project that we have for water lines that we got a couple of months back, we can move forward with that one. So every one of them has it, so we just have to make sure that we dot our i's and cross our t's. This one doesn't really have... The only thing we know now is time is of the essence to get our application so that we get it in the pipeline.
I kind of think it's of time and the essence to help them, too. I think they're... I don't know their insides, but they've been shut down for 18 months. So I think it's something, you know, they probably need it as soon as they can.
I'd make a motion to approve. Hold on, I got a question. Who owns the Pollard building now?
We do. Well, the bank.
The Pollard? I mean, is it individuals? Is it a corporation?
The Pollard Theater Company.
Okay.
So it's not Larry Leig, right?
No.
Okay. I just wanted to ask.
The Pollard Inn.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't... I knew that. I just... I was curious on who actually owned the physical building.
It's a little ambiguous space, because the Pollard Inn actually swings on top.
Right.
We rent that from him, but 95% of the building is the Pollard Theater Company.
And the theater company is a nonprofit 501?
Right.
So will this work with the VOTAC? Will this help you guys as well? I'm just asking.
It helps with movies. It doesn't necessarily tie right into the VOTAC, and I think you're talking about the training program for theater workers, or not theater, but movie workers. It will tie more into the soundstage that we're trying to do, where that will be a learning lab for the VOTAC to use for the students at their film craft school. But it could help them. It will help the film industry in general, because we can host film events there. We can shoot movies there when they need a theater scene. We're hoping that students at the Crew Tech get opportunities, not only their regular education programs at the Crew Tech, but get to be interns, so they get actual hands-on experience shooting a movie when movies are in town as well. So they all kind of play together.
And the trainings that the VOTAC will provide will also be beneficial for crew members from the live theater community, because they can cross-train to work on live theater and film productions. It just... It makes them... Their skills, their skill base broaden to where they're just more employable across the board.
So that's probably an option for the Pollard, is for the VOTAC to lease out potentially?
We've been in discussion.
Is that something that you're looking at?
Infant stages, no plans yet, but...
But yeah, it makes sense to do that. And I was at the lunch at the airport when Senator Hall was talking about involvement with the city, so... Just redo my motion to approve.
I'll second that. A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Cast your votes.
All votes ranked.
Vote unanimous. Passes. City manager's report. Leroy?
I don't have any additional report tonight.
Item number 10, request comments from members of the city council. Brian?
Don, you're doing a great job with everything that you do with the victims and the crimes and everything else. T-Mobile is having a ribbon cut in Friday, 4 o'clock, if anybody wants to know about that. And other than that, I just, you know, hopefully you guys can, you know, move forward with this grant and get it going quick.
Absolutely.
So...
Don?
I'm the same deal with the theater. I think I'm glad to be behind it and helping it. I appreciate it being here. I attend it when it is going, and I hope this helps it go to the next level.
Right.
Thank you.
Man, I just wanted to thank you for reading that agenda tonight. I was able to follow along. You read it word for word, and it was very helpful. I appreciate the agenda being read as written. Thank you for that.
Could you ask him where he's placing his bets? So I kind of...
Yeah. We both kind of gambled. Jeff, what do you got?
When do we go to the... Never mind. Staff, thank you, guys. I know all of y'all have been working hard, so I appreciate it. Thank you, too, Leroy. I don't want to leave you out. But yeah, I think it's a great idea. I think anything we can do for Guthrie to push us forward, to help us out, and hey, I've gone to the Pollard since it started. I remember when it was the Melville Theater. So it's changed over, so I think it'll be successful. I appreciate you working hard.
Tracy?
I agree with Mr. Tucker.
I have one more thing. I hope everybody has a good holiday. Next week is Thanksgiving, so I hope everyone has a good Turkey Day.
I'll second that one. We all have a wonderful Thanksgiving. All the COVID, the disruptions of our holidays last year, it's going to be nice to have things be back a little bit closer to normal this year, so... Anyway, that's all I've got. We need to consider approval to convene in the executive session, pursuant to Title 25 OS 2001 as follows, A Section 372, "For the purpose of discussing negotiations concerning employees and representatives of the paternal police lodge number 105."
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Cast your votes.
All votes ranked.
Unanimous?